Good evening, welcome to our April 20th regular meeting of the West Orange Board of Education. Mr. Calavano, let's begin.
Robo-call. Mr. Alper.
Here.
Mrs. Merklinger.
Here.
Mr. Rothstein.
Here.
Mrs. Trick Scales.
Here.
Mrs. Tony Cliff.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could please remain standing for a moment, I'd like to just have a moment of silence for Joe Soriano, the West Orange 43-year English teacher and track coach who passed back on April 10th, and of course, for everyone else who's been so impacted by COVID-19 this year. Thank you.
Notice of meeting, please take notice, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided for in the following manner. That a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on January 7th and on April 13th, 2020. That said, notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. That said, notice was posted in the Lobby Administration Building of Board of Education.
All right, may I have a motion for consideration of the closed and public meeting minutes of April 6?
A motion, second.
All right, Mr. Calavano.
Mrs. Merklinger.
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein.
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff.
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. All right, Dr. Cascone, Superintendent Report.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting. I have a brief report, after which time I'm going to give the floor to our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Mrs. DeMendez, to provide some updates to the public regarding the ongoing progress and work with our e-platform. Of course, we can continue, we continue to keep you, you know, well updated through social media, our website, correspondences that go home via email and robo-calls, but wanted to present, you know, in the context of a board meeting. But just a couple of things. As noted in some correspondence that I put out last week, and as you're all probably aware, the governor has extended the school closures until May 15th. This was the first extension where we started to also hear, kind of couched with this extended date, the, you know, the possibility that there might be a return in some way for students at some time this year. And so while some might think that that is unrealistic and not particularly likely, the fact that it appears the door has been opened potentially to that, we've begun to shift our focus to what reopening might look like, just in terms of best practices. And of course, obviously, we would need further guidance from the state as to what that would be. But, you know, we've learned in that, you know, we don't want to wait until the decision is made to start at least thinking about these things and starting to communicate. And so, you know, one thing, just, you know, one thing we've done is we've, you know, we purchased thousands of masks because we've heard is that if school returns were to happen, that masks might need to be worn. Obviously, the return to school raises many, many questions, but we don't want to be left flat-footed in the event that the governor opens the opportunity for students and staff to return to school. Quick update on budget. Obviously, we met last week for a public work session on budget. I think it was a very productive work session on the part of the board, namely in that we came to consensus on the overall budget, the number, if you will. And that was really crucial because it's enabled us now to move forward with a variety of different processes that are connected and tangent to that budget process. I will tell you, though, that our work on the budget continues, obviously not with adding to the budget, but continuing to, in the upcoming weeks, as we lead up to the final budget presentation, in ways that we can continue to perhaps save money, as well as perhaps save positions which were previously slated for cutting from the budget. So that work continues. I wanted to, again, you know, as on one hand, you know, in our e-learning platform, the instruction, the teaching continues, all of the other processes that typically go along with school district operations continue. And so, from the standpoint of policy, the board was, is very committed to their work with policy this year. It was a goal that they had, they had set for the board. And so, we will have a public work session Monday of next week, and we will have a subcommittee meeting this week so that we can kind of dust off the work that we were really ramping up on prior to the closures and get some good policy work done this year. I wanted to just kind of touch base relative to the referendum. I think it's appropriate to talk a little bit about the referendum, which was something that we had talked a lot about at the beginning of the year. And in fact, we were originally moving forward with a referendum that was going to be over $50 million. We kind of put the brakes on that for a variety of different reasons, but one was a very practical reason, which was we really felt that we needed to have our architects conduct a thorough and comprehensive evaluation of all our facilities. Now, the original referendum was really just, was primarily an HVAC referendum. There were some roofs in there, there was a retaining wall in there, but by and large, the lion's share of the cost of that referendum, I think almost $30 million, was HVAC. And here we were moving forward with this referendum without really having had a comprehensive evaluation of our facilities, not covered in the ESIP assessment that was done. I want to be clear on that. The more recent assessment that we've had done by the architects did not cover items which were previously assessed during the ESIP evaluation. And we sat down with our architects, virtually of course, last week, to get some feedback from them on that facility's evaluation. And we were happy to hear that there were, from their professional perspective, no projects that were of emergent and critical need. In other words, that, you know, we need to get done because, say, a staircase, stairwell was in danger of falling down. Our buildings are by and large in pretty good shape. What this means is, is that when we, if and when we do decide to go out for a referendum, it would be a much smaller referendum than the one we originally proposed. It would cover the most urgent HVAC needs. In other words, the HVAC needs that would be necessary in order to bring our building up to code, our buildings up to code. And then it might also cover some of the larger ticket items that were turned up in the facilities evaluation that would be difficult, if not cost prohibitive, to fund out of an annual operating budget. In this way, we could get our most critical HVAC needs taken care of, any big-ticket items that were identified, the facilities eval, and that would be inclusive of the wash and retaining wall. And we'd be going out to the public with a much more modest, you know, fiscally responsible referendum. Of course, you know, that is not fait accompli. We continue to discuss that. We will be scheduling a work session for later in the spring to really review that work and review the facilities assessment. And one other thing I should mention, which I know is of importance to our community, is relative to our preschool. So we are, do have the architects engaging in a couple of different evaluations of facilities for the purpose of determining the cost to retrofit those facilities so that we can, we can open up a preschool facility that can accommodate our needs, both present and to some extent, for growth. So that is also a part of our conversations as they relate to the referendum and to our facilities evaluation. Of course, we continue with our personnel. We're in personnel season now, namely, we've had a number of retirements. So, working with our interim Director of Personnel, Dr. McCartney, on putting together our needs for hiring for the upcoming school year so that we can begin getting those processes going and ensuring that we're bringing the most qualified talent and to some extent also focusing on our, on our, on the goals of our diversity committee to ensure that we are, that we are venturing into all different environments, universities, job fairs, so that we have access to the widest pool of candidates out there. A couple of little, a couple of little things before I turn over the floor to Mrs. DeMendez is, I don't know, if you're not on social media, something that I saw recently, which I found very heartening at this time, was the account which is posting all of the colleges and universities to which our seniors have gained acceptance, mission, our athletes, you know, I saw a number of posts from our cross-country and track programs blown away. I mean, athlete after athlete committing to universities to continue not only their educational career, but their athletic career. And I thought that was heartening to me because it demonstrates that things continue to move forward for our kids. Their futures are not on hold, although to some extent, their present may be impacted. Their futures are not on hold, and they continue to move forward with their plans, which I think is reason to be, feel very happy and very positive for them. And I extend congratulations to all our seniors and their families on this tremendous accomplishment. And finally, in closing, I would just say that, you know, we continue to, you know, we continue to get great feedback from parents. We continue to get great feedback from teachers as it relates to our operating procedures and methods with regard to our e-platform. And we, and what I can tell you is, and what I see in the daily meetings I attend and the things that are going out, is really an effort to try and provide as individualized attention to students, whether it be in support of their social emotional wellbeing or their academic needs. And I can tell you, if for whatever reason, as a parent, or a student for that matter, you feel you are in need of something, and maybe it's social emotional support, or maybe it's just you feel like you're not getting what you need out of the academic experience, our teachers are here, they're being, from what I can tell, very, very receptive to taking that feedback from parents and from students and are going to do their level best to try and incorporate that. I would just close on one point, which is that, is that, is we try and do that, recognizing that, you know, our teachers are not, are not, you know, they're not machines. They're people, they're flesh and blood, they're human beings that are managing their own crises, their own loss, you know, and, and so even as well, and I know that they're putting their best foot forward, but I think this requires for us to kind of really think on a communal level and looking out for everyone's best interest. And I can assure you that we are absolutely doing that for your children and will continue to do that and be as responsive as possible. And I do think that that is a good segue to Mrs. DeMendez as she talks a little bit specifically about the updates to the elementary program and perhaps other things as well. And that is, Mr. President, my report.
Thank you very much. Ms. DeMendez.
Good evening. Before I begin with an update, I just hope that, of course, this update as well as all of our communication continues to find our families healthy and well. Certainly, our primary purpose and focus tends to be toward the academic and educational end of what we need to take care of in the district as it relates to state mandates and all of those things. But we also are certainly leaning into the understanding that this goes beyond the academic and we're needing to really just hear and understand what our students are going through, what our families are going through. And, and our teachers are doing that, we're trying to reach out. Our staff is reaching out to our families just to make sure that everyone's all right. Dr. Cascone mentioned in his update, if there's any need, if there's a need that a family has, I know there are hotlines and things happening on the district level. Also, when a teacher calls in, if there's a need that's present, please communicate that with your teachers so that we could know and so that we could respond in a compassionate way to the circumstances that everyone's facing. Relationship over rigor, I think that's what we're really talking about at the beginning of all of our meetings. We want to make sure that our students are safe, our families are safe. And while we are talking about assignments and grading, which we find difficult to do, knowing that there's a profound level of suffering going on, we want to make sure that it's clear, relationship over rigor. And so then, all of our approaches, we're trying to do that, implement them with great levels of flexibility as it relates to these processes, as it relates to assignments and grading. We've asked our teachers to be very mindful of the circumstances at home as we implement. And therefore, if there's a need for greater flexibility, please reach out, please communicate to the teachers so that we can, we can interact that way. At the same level as we're employing flexibility with the students, we're trying to be mindful of our staff, Dr. Cascone also mentioned that. Our staff have families of their own and losses of their own, right? And their children are also home. So, one of the things that we've implemented is office hours for the teachers, which is probably in a window of about three hours. So your teacher should be communicating what that window of office hours will be, and that's when they'll be available to speak with you, respond to you, respond to the emails. This will help protect their home-life balance, and this will help make sure that they can give themselves over to the planning of the instruction for your students, for reaching out to the students via the different modes of communication that they have, whether it's in their Google Classroom, whether it's by Google Meet, or the communication via email regarding those assignments. If the window is not a good fit, just email the teacher, let them know. They'll respond to you within 24 hours. I think we've had really good communication up to date, to date. So, that's something, though, that you can expect. You can expect the teachers to be available for you within that office hours window, as well as responding to any emails that you have within 24 hours. Knowing that we have a great variance amongst our students and the ability to really tend to their schoolwork, we are looking at operating on both sides of the time that a student can spend online in instruction. So, from the side of students who are really working diligently to accomplish all of their assignments, we have decreased the length of our lessons at the elementary grade levels, pre-K through 5. We've asked teachers to just simplify those lessons. It does take longer to complete those independently versus in a classroom setting. So we've asked the teachers to just be very mindful of how long it takes a student to accomplish a lesson at home, in a new setting, in an independent setting, and to make sure that those assignments are 30 minutes or less. Teachers will be chunking the material, so that's what you can expect to see as a parent, that the teachers are chunking the material over multi-day assignments. We're not assigning assignments daily, so the student doesn't have to hand something in or turn something in via their Google Classroom daily. That's proving to be overwhelming for the student and for the teacher to provide meaningful feedback. So, they're providing multi-day assignments. On the other side of that, if there are students who are moving through the assignments quickly and they feel that they can accomplish more, we're encouraging our students to enter into our e-learning platform, which is outside of the Google Classroom. And there, students will find many, many enrichment activities. They can find them in the school counseling area. By clicking on the school counseling zone, they can enter into activities that have to do with social-emotional learning. They can enter into mindfulness activities, how to deal with anxiety, how to deal with the fact that they're by themselves and separated from their friends. So there's many, many really well-constructed activities that are in the school counseling area. Another area students can go to for enrichment is the library resources. And in that area, students will find readings. The librarians are reading to students at the younger levels. They'll find resources for enrichment activities there. Students can also enter into their elective courses where extra assignments are in there, or extra activities are in there that they can use to enrich their activities. Also, while our gifted and learning, gifted and talented teachers generally service the GNT students, and those students can also access those activities in their own classrooms, they are going to be expanding into enrichment activities. So you'll see those populating the e-learning site shortly so that students, again, who are moving through their assignments a little quicker, they can go and take part in all of the enrichment activities in the e-learning, in the e-learning site. With regard to attendance, this is just a reminder to parents at the elementary level that attendance is taken by assignment, as it is at the upper levels, but at the elementary level in particular, it's by RAS Kids. So students, just, parents, if you could, just be mindful to help us with that so that when students log in, that's where their attendance is. So they would need to go into RAS Kids, log in, and complete their reading assignment, or at least just log in. Teachers are understanding, and again, flexibility. If the student logs in and attempts to complete that assignment, then they will be marked present. At this point, all of our classrooms, pre-K through 12, are in Google Classroom. So, that was some feedback that we were receiving from parents that in the e-learning site, there were so many different places to go. So now, everybody should be in Google Classroom. I think this is a great benefit both to the teachers, the students, and parents because the students can log into their Google Classroom, they can access all of their work there, they can access all of their assignments there, they can submit their assignments there. And now, for the rollout of Google Meet, it's right within the classroom. So there's the safety features that we were looking for as a district just to make sure that all students were able to interact with that feature while protecting their safety. Teachers are rolling that out in different ways. It may be just a screen share, it may be a screen share with audio and chat, and it may be a video interaction. But all of the different types of interactions with Google Meet are available, and teachers are implementing them as they most see comfortable because we do have a learning curve on our teacher end as well. So, we'll see Google Meets rolling out with much more consistency across the different grade spans. Again, but that might look differently. So, as parents, you can expect that to look differently across the grade levels. With regard to modifications in the instructional schedule, we did decrease English Language Arts. It was 90 minutes a day, it's now moved to 60 minutes a day for reading/writing, the RAS Kids reading assignment, and our foundations. Our Social Studies and Science was three times per week for grades K through 3. We've decreased that to two times per week. And our electives will now be taught one time per week. However, again, if that is, is, if students are moving through that quickly, please move into the e-learning site where, again, all of those additional enrichment activities are there through libraries, school counseling, all of the electives, et cetera. Something that we're implementing now into Week 5 of e-learning is Flex Fridays at the elementary level. Flex Fridays will be used for students to really catch up on their work and teachers to be able to really plan effectively for the future week. Future weeks that are upcoming, we're now through May 15th. And students will really have a good opportunity to take a look at their assignments, see if there's anything that they're missing, and make up that work, as well as enter into the enrichment activities and vary their learning a little bit and look at exploring some alternative types of educational opportunities. So, Flex Fridays for the elementary. At the high school and middle school level, we have Wednesday, April 22nd, as a flex day. So that will be a day for our middle and high school students to catch up on their work. Just a reminder to parents that the middle school and high school marking period ends shortly. It's Monday, April 27th. We've sent out reminders to students and to parents. Students do have the opportunity to hand in any missed assignment since we've started the e-learning through Monday, April 27th. So that opportunity is there. If a student has not been able to catch up up to this point, please know that that availability is present. Communicate with the teachers, communicate with your principal, and they'll extend that if necessary for whatever the extenuating circumstances are. We also updated that we weren't having formal parent-teacher conferences right now, but teachers are reaching out to parents, check on students, see how they're doing, see how they're doing with their work. So that will serve as a communication point between parents and teachers as far as progress goes. With regard to elementary report cards, parents can expect that the week of April 27th, they should start receiving communication around the report cards, whether it be a report card via email, or for those parents who need it mailed home, our teachers and our school principals are working toward that end. So, parents can expect to receive those report cards for the elementary level. And just as a note, those grades will only reflect the instruction that took place prior to the school's closing. So the elementary report cards will not reflect the elementary learning. It will reflect all learning that took place prior to the closure. And something new that we're still exploring, how exactly we're going to implement it, is at the elementary level, we've moved the grading to a pass/fail. And that might have a variance to it. We'll be communicating and writing to the parents what that will specifically look like and how that will be determined. But as a district, we thought it best, for the elementary, since the first two weeks, they were not able to submit assignments. And we've had a large number of students who were unable to access the technology for the first two or three weeks of school that we just considered all of the dynamic and everything that's happening and just be fair to our students. So, for the elementary, there will be a modified grading applied. For the secondary, excuse me, they will stay in their grades. But again, the teachers are being flexible, students have the opportunity to hand in their assignments as they, as they get them in. And I think the key thing is just communicate, please, with your teachers. Let them know what your circumstance is so that we can be mindful and continue to show the compassion that's needed throughout this, throughout this time. With regard to how we're communicating, I think that would be one of the latter pieces, is that teachers are predominantly communicating via Google Classroom. So, ask your children to share with you what those communications are. They're primarily through the classroom, that's where students will be informed of deadlines and assignments. Now, as a parent, you are able to get an email with assignments that are due. So you can just email your teacher and ask them to link you. And so then, what that will do is, when assignments are overdue, you'll get an automatic email so that you're aware, because parents can't legally log into classrooms, right? Only students can. But there is a way for us to send you an automated email for you to receive information about an assignment that might be passed due or some struggle point that your student is having. Google Classroom does have that capacity. I just want to end by thanking our parents. I know that you're managing your students at home and working from home and/or not. And so we know that that's a challenge. Again, please let us know if there's any way we can support you and your students through this time. And to our staff, we know our staff is certainly being very, very diligent and thoughtful about how they are caring for our students in this time. So I, just to thank you to everyone who's, who's come together in such a beautiful way, in a West Orange way, to support our students. And that would conclude my report.
Great, thank you, Ms. DeMendez. Any board member with questions on the presentation? We can go down the list in the order you appear on my screen, which means Mr. Rothstein will be first.
Which means I have to find the unmute button quickly. Actually, just one quick question for clarification. Ms. DeMendez, when you were speaking about the locations to go for additional resources, you mentioned the counseling area, the library, and the elective courses. Are those within Google, within Google Meet, or I'm sorry, Google Classroom?
That's without Google Classroom, that's in the e-learning platform. So when a parent goes to our district website, to the e-learning site proper, they will go into their school as they normally would. So I would click on, if I were a Hazel parent, I would click on Hazel. And then at the lower end of the screen, I would see icons for school counseling, for library, for my electives.
Got it, thank you for clarifying. And no questions other than that, thank you.
Great, Ms. Tony Cliff.
Also have to unmute. I don't believe I have any questions at this time, thank you.
All right, Ms. Merklinger.
Just one question, because I've seen this on social media. So, I don't know that we've necessarily addressed it completely at this point yet, but I know there was some concern with elementary students, especially 5th graders, being moved to pass/fail, how that's going to look in terms of determining honors and for some of the younger grades, gifted and talented, for next year. And I'm not sure if we've addressed that just yet, but I was wondering if we had any, if we had maybe a timeline of where we were looking to kind of think about that as we move through this uncharted territory of, you know, learning from home and remotely.
Yeah, and I think, Ms. Merklinger, uncharted territory is what it would be for us, right? Trying to figure it out from home. But what we can say is that... But what we can say is that the initial criteria for entrance into these types of programs are determined by MAP assessments and by prior year state assessments, which is all data that we already have. Right? So we already have last year's state assessments. We already have the beginning of year MAP scores. We will have the elementary report card grades coming in, which were determined prior to a student leaving for e-learning. So it would be more valid, right? The only thing that would be missing would be that appeals process or the testing. And what we've decided is to just hold that over the summer. So once we're released from the stay-at-home and once things kind of normalize, then we can set a date. And then anyone who would like to be, you know, to test for the programs, then we'll hold that that testing during the summer. And certainly we'll listen to all and all appeals, right? So if any parent or student would like to appeal into the program, we'll also take a look at that.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Trick Scales.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. A couple of questions, Mrs. Dominguez. Are we getting many parents who are challenged by the technology? We know that some of our teachers of the younger grades, they're getting up to speed. So I'm just wondering about the parents.
Yes, absolutely. Sure, we have some of our parents who are challenged with the technology. It's new to them. It's new to the students in some cases. What we're doing is, number one, we have an instructional technology support team. So we have one person assigned to each building. And they're checking on students and parents. They're calling home to check if a parent has need, and then that person, that support team, will walk them through. A second layer for specialized populations like our ELL learners, all of the ESL teachers are calling home and in native language, they're walking parents through the technology, helping them log in, helping them access the content. And in some instances where it's just not feasible, they're sending packets home to those parents. And we do have those situations. But Dr. Cascone has a really good process at Central Office where when there's a need identified of the like, then we send his office the email and then someone will bring that packet to the home. So the teacher will send the work and then we'll do a drop-off specifically to the home. That's another way we've been trying to mitigate that. And then recently this week, what we will see happening is that all of our interventionists are basic skills teachers and are interventionists. The teachers and principals are gathering a list of anyone who is still struggling at home or unable to really acclimate to the technology and the assignments. And those interventionists are beginning to call home one-on-one with students. They'll start to have Google Meets one-on-one to provide interventions with the students. And so then that's a whole team of teachers. We have about 25 who are starting to push in toward that end.
That's wonderful. Glad to hear that. And, you know, I'm just really pleased that we continue to assess and modify everything we're doing since this is a new venture for us all. And I especially like the Flex Fridays because that's a time for everybody just to exhale and catch up. And the same thing is true for those Flex Wednesdays for the upper grades. This sort of reminds me of being a first-year teacher. When you're planning for the first time, you generally either underplan or you overplan. And it takes a while for it to all kind of even out so that you understand what your students can do and what's really appropriate. And so I think that's what everyone is doing, not just here in West Orange, but everywhere. Because this is uncharted territory. And I think that we're doing a fabulous job here in West Orange with listening to our parents, getting feedback, responding. The pass/fail, I've had some conversations with Dr. Cascone. Just my opinion on how we might refine that. But that's left up to the administration as to how you move with it. But I know that that has been some relief for parents and for students. But I just want to make sure that if students are able to do the work and exceed the work, that they're getting credit for what they do. I think that's very important. So I think in one of the letters, you mentioned high mastery. So if we're looking at mastery as a standard, that's something that I would be happy to see. That would be equitable for all of our students. And so thank you, Ms. Dominguez. You know, you're overseeing all of this. And again, I can't imagine what a challenge that is to keep all those balls up in the air and do it as well as you are. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I really like the "relationships over rigor," I think is a great motto for this and where we are right now. And yeah, uncharted territory, to be sure. But I think, you know, we should all be you should be proud, and we should be proud of the work that's being done here, because I think, you know, this looks terrific. My one question at the moment would be, do we have a sense of how many families are currently unable to access things electronically, who are waiting on Mi-Fi devices or otherwise just won't be able to participate electronically? Even if it's just on a percentage basis?
I think Dr. Cascone would be able to provide those numbers for you.
Sure.
Yeah, I think it is a handful at best. And I will tell you that every household has been contacted multiple times. We've done residential visits to other houses. You know, and I think what's happened in some cases is, we had, speaking with a principal today, we had a student that's temporarily relocated to Virginia. So I think in some cases, when you're not able to get in touch with folks, it may simply be by virtue of the fact that they, you know, they're no longer, you know, they may not be here due to emergent circumstances. But I would say the number that does not have access to a Chromebook or Wi-Fi Mi-Fi device is extremely, extremely low. We put out approximately 750 Chromebooks and over 100 Mi-Fi devices, so.
I'm glad we're able to do that. Okay. If we have any questions from the public on any agenda item, including this presentation, you can click to raise your hand and follow the instructions for that process. And once you're in, just let us know your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay, at this time, anyone who wants to use the raised hand feature for the attendee that's on the phone is the star nine feature. We do not have anyone raising their hands.
Okay. Just given the nature of technology, we'll just give it a few extra seconds, just in case, another 15, 20 seconds or so. And then we'll move on to the rest of the agenda. And then obviously, there'll be the other public comment period at the end. 15 seconds is a lot of silence. All right, we will continue then. May I have a motion for personnel items 1 through 3?
I'll motion. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I would just like to thank Ms. Melazuski and Dr. Polara for extending their service to the district. I think that's such a noble cause to put the district ahead of their own personal plans to give us the opportunity to find replacements for those key positions. So just a thank.
Absolutely. All right, Mr. Calavano.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Ms. Tunnycliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, next, may I have a motion for curriculum and instruction, item 1?
I'll motion.
And I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
I'm sorry, I did have one question. I was hoping to get a little bit more of an explanation of what the advancement via individual determination is and how it benefits our schools.
Great. So I'll take a run at that question. And we have Mrs. Dominguez here on the wings, if she wants to add to the response. So Avid is a program that has been utilized in the high school for a number of years now. It is geared towards what would be first-generation college students. And so, but students who might previously had demonstrate maybe, you know, performance that could use assistance, things of that nature. And so it's really a program that identifies a cohort of students and really provides them with kind of an intensive, you know, kind of cohort-based, multifaceted approach to their education, which focuses on a number of things, not limited to academic skills, interpersonal skills, organizational skills, you know, college and career exploration and things of that nature. And so its mission is really to kind of kind of meet that, kind of that's almost that silent majority. They wouldn't necessarily fall, you know, on either end of the spectrum. But they are absolutely very capable of excelling in a four-year, top-tier, four-year college program.
Thank you very much for the explanation.
You're welcome, Ms. Ross.
All right, anything further? All right.
I would just like to add that I'm familiar with the program and that if supported, it runs well, and it does students well. And we know that we have increased our graduation rate at the high school. And I bet if we go back and look, we can probably get Mr. Moore to give us some data that would show that Avid has been a part of that increase in the graduation rate. So I'm happy to see that we're going to continue to support it.
Good. And yeah, I would say, you know, I'd love to see a presentation when we get back into some normal times. And, you know, we can schedule things like that. I'd like to, you know, just learn a little bit more about it. You know, I'm aware of it as a parent myself and, you know, read a lot of the materials for it when my now senior was a freshman, you know, going into his freshman year. So I'm aware of it, but I'd, you know, like to see how that's going. All right, anyone further? All right, Mr. Calavano.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes, oops, sorry.
And yes from me as well.
Ms. Tunnycliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, next, Finance, Special Services number 1 and Business Office items 1 through 5. May I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I did have two questions, and I talked to Mr. Calavano about these a little bit earlier. And I see transportation is on here and also our food service. And my one question about the transportation was, had we come to an agreement with the contractor about the services for this? And then also about food services is where we are in terms of budget on this item, given that we don't have the number of students in schools right now.
So regarding transportation, what's on the bills list this evening is for actual work that occurred prior to this event. We're looking now into the future on how we're going to handle the balance of the school year. So we're consulting with our board attorney. And also I have a conference call with all the business administrators in SS County this Wednesday to see what everybody else is going to be doing. Because we all want to be on the same page. We all deal with the same type of vendors. So I'll probably know more after Wednesday's conference call. Regarding the food service, we're accustomed to serving 5,000 meals a day. We're about 1,800 meals now. We do have a guarantee in our contract that we are guaranteed, Masua actually guarantees a certain profit from our contract. I don't think we're going to meet that number, but we're not going to see a deficit either in the food service account. So we'll still have a profit, but not as large as it would have been if school was in session.
Thank you.
Mr. Calavano, Ms. Tunnycliff, may I just, Mr. Calavano, something?
Sure.
Mr. Calavano, I've heard mention of this meal reimbursement and funding that's coming down as a result of the, you know, the pandemic. What can you talk, what can you tell us about that?
Well, at this point, we submitted the paperwork for the reimbursement. So I'm just waiting to see, you know, how much we're going to be entitled to for the meals that we're serving.
Got you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further?
I do have a question. On the transfer sheet, we transferred money from electric to heating. So I just wondered, we had kind of a mild winter, so wondering why we did that.
We just underbudgeted in the heating account.
So you just needed to move that funding over, even though we had a mild winter? And then I wanted to know about the the last item, ground supplies. And I didn't know what that, where that money went. The abbreviation, I didn't understand that. A-R-C-H, number 10.
That transfer went to Fund 12, which is to fund the architect's work for the chimney at Kelly to do the architectural.
Oh, right. Okay. And that was 12,000. Right. Okay. I recall that. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I did just have one question. In looking at and foreseeing that we've been, the schools and buildings have been closed for some time now, I would expect that our bills for heating electric over time and as such are potentially lower. So I'm wondering if we have, if we're expecting to see that these bills will decrease? And does that then put more money into our budget that we can use for items to basically prepay for some of the stuff that we're looking to budget for next year in the 2021? And I'm wondering if that's just kind of an outside-of-the-box way of maybe taking some of the burden off of the current or the budget that we're looking for for next year? I don't know if that's something we're allowed to do or able to do, but just something to consider just in terms of what we're saving right now. I don't know how much we're saving, but I'm assuming that once the transportation issue is worked out and the food services, right now, facilities and grounds aren't being used, we're not attending conferences, we're not attending sporting events, we're not having any athletic events or music events. So I'm just wondering if some of those savings that we're not doing, so we didn't have the play, so the lighting wasn't used at the high school. So I'm just wondering if there's some savings in there that we could potentially have and then use that money for prepayment or use ahead of time for next year or for some of the items that we have for next year.
That's a good question. Yes, we should see savings coming out of this year's budget. No, we cannot prepay for any expenses that are budgeted for next year. That's something that is frowned upon by the auditors. We can't. Anything that really is for next year has to wait until next year's budget. The only thing this will do for us is this will increase our fund balance because we're really underfunded in our fund balance. So this will actually help us in the long run.
Thank you.
All right, anything further on Business Office? All right, Mr. Calavano. Vegas, Mr. Rothstein, go ahead.
I'm so sorry. It's that darn mute button. Just very quickly, I wanted to confirm again that item number 5, the wireless devices, the term that's set for them is six months. At this time, is it our expectation that at the end of those six months, I would assume that it's our hope and our expectation that we would be able to return the devices and not be required to extend any contract to pay further for services? Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Rothstein. Unless the board wished to, you know, engage in a conversation about the extent to which we, as a district, wanted to support the connectivity issues, connectivity issues of our, of some of our households, of our students moving forward. But presently, the deal is, the arrangement is only for six months.
Okay, Trey, thank you.
Great. And I would just like to show our appreciation to the township for working with us and on behalf of our kids in need of technology. I just think it's a wonderful thing that they're making this possible because so many districts are struggling with how to do it. And here we are doing it and doing it well. So thank you to our partners at the township level.
Absolutely. All right, Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Ms. Tunnycliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Yes. All right, next up, petitions and hearings of citizens, public comment, any topic at all. Again, let us know your name and address when you come in and you'll have three minutes on the clock.
Okay, we do have a hand raised by Mr. Kramer. Mr. Kramer, you're gonna follow the prompt on your screen? There, are you hear us, Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Okay, there you are. If you could state your name for the record and your address.
Adam Kramer, 20 Moran Road. I wanted to follow up on what I said two weeks ago where I had some real concerns about the fiscal management of the school. And the answer from the superintendent was, well, you know, between the increase in salaries and increase in healthcare, you were looking at about $8 million up. That answer, your answer is problematic because the healthcare contracts and the contracts with your employees are set by the board. Now, in all fairness, I believe only Mr. Alper and Mr. Calavano were there at the last round when the last contract was voted on in 2018. I was there and I said that this would become economically unsustainable and be a budget problem. Three former board members, Ms. Brill, Ms. Lab, Mr. Schwartzbound, were there and advised the board that this was problematic and would become a problem in the future. And guess what? It's a problem in the future. This is not to criticize the teachers or the staff. Teachers and the staff are good people and for the most part do a good job. The problem is you can't compensate school employees and public employees more than the tax base can sustain. And we've been doing that. And that's the underlying problem. In fact, I would say you're not really budgeting it now in the spring of 2020 as a school board. The budget really was set by the West Orange Education Association back in 2018 in the spring. So this has to change. You can't have a system of increased step plus raises for cost of living. You can't have healthcare where the town pays the lion's share that is better than just about everybody else's healthcare. You can't have pensions that are work 30 years and then get paid your salary for 20 to 30 years after that. It's just economically unsustainable. Not, again, a criticism of the staff. It's just saying you have to have compensation levels for public employees that are in line with what the tax base can sustain. With that being said, I want to know if there's going to be any give back from our employees on raises, healthcare, to help economically devastated town where we have lots of people not working and lots of businesses close. I thank the board for listening to me and I wish you all well.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Do we have anyone else at this time? And we do not.
All right, seeing no one further, we'll close out public comment. You know, I would just say, as you know, a member of the negotiations committee, obviously, we can't discuss negotiations. But, you know, the negotiation process is always going to be a give and take. And at the end of the day, you know, the the associations will ask for things that the board will not, you know, be easily able to give. And the board will ask for things that the association will not be easily able to give. And, you know, that's been the process every three to five years since, you know, since forever. And, you know, that's you, we're in a place where we are based on many, many years of the collective bargaining process playing itself out. Obviously, we all live here, we all play this, pay the same taxes. We're all, as far as I know, right around that average amount of, you know, $14,500. It's it's a large amount. It's painful for everyone, I think. And, you know, we're certainly cognizant of that. And, you know, as we do our jobs as board members, it's certainly always on our minds, you know, that we, that it's 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 true, the community can only support what the community can support. But at the same time, we need to have high-quality schools, which we do, with a breadth and depth of programming that make West Orange an attractive destination for people. You know, this came up in our last meeting and I said something similar. I said, you know, sure, in theory, this board could produce a 0% increase budget, which still, due to the way budgets work, would still be something like a $100 and change increase year on year. But it would be at the cost of something like 85 jobs and would cause such damage to the system that now you're still paying the same thing in taxes and still 14, 5. And now you have a school system that's been seriously damaged. So, you know, at that point, you start to go into a spiral as a town that I don't think is, you know, anywhere that we could responsibly put ourselves. So, you know, the process continues. We continue to look for savings where we can. And we continue to, you know, live in this world that we've, that's built on the shoulders, that we do what we can and will continue to do so. Thank you. All right, a board member reports. Mr. Rothstein, you can go first again if you'd like.
Thank you. Yeah, briefly, I just want to state that I'm grateful to the attendees who have showed up to the meeting tonight. This is all so strange to adjust to doing meetings like this remotely. And it actually is heartening to click on the participants tab and see that there are people who are showing up to the meetings as awkward as it may be to view them in this format. So thank you to all of you. Then thank you for the comment that we just heard from from Mr. Kramer and for the response from Mrs., Mr. Alper. These decisions are incredibly difficult and they're incredibly painful for us. And it's important to hear your voices and to know that you're attending the meetings and and hearing us out and sharing your thoughts as we wrestle with how to best serve our students and our schools and and our community. So so that's it for me for tonight. Just a big thank you to our community for letting us hear from you.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein. Ms. Tony Cliff?
Hi, everybody. Thanks for joining us tonight. I also just want to thank all of our faculty and staff and everyone at Central Office who is making the distance learning happen for our students. I know nobody thought we would be in this position when we started the school year back in September. So we appreciate everything you're doing and keep up the good job. We're, we're all impressed with with what we've been able to deliver, what you've been able to deliver for our students. So thank you so much. Parents continue to reach out and share feedback as we continue to modify our plans as we go forward. Reach out to your teachers, especially. Want to remind everybody about the communication policy that we just put in place in terms of how to, what the protocol is, if you have an issue in the classroom or with the work, to contact your teacher first. They should be the first point of contact and should be able to help you with anything you might be struggling with. And then if that doesn't get resolved, you can bring in your building principal. And hopefully you'll be able to resolve it with that. If not, then it's gets kicked up to our superintendent. But just want to remind everybody, I know this is uncharted waters, but that we do have a policy in place for this and would like everybody to continue to use that protocol as we continue over the next month or so with our e-learning. Also, I wanted to bring to your attention, there is a little survey, it's a really quick survey on e-counseling. It's an e-counseling check-in that's on our Wobo website. So if all parents could take that survey, that would be extremely helpful. It helps out our counselors to figure out where they need to address any issues that come up and what they can, how they can expand their offerings during this environment. So it's right in a pop-up that comes up, there's a place to click it. And you could, it takes a few minutes, so please fill that out for both all of your students in your household. It just kind of talks about how your students are doing. And then also, I just wanted to remind everybody again, we have the parent support hotline. I think Ms. Demendez had also referenced this in her report earlier this evening. The hotline is 973-435-9637. And you can use this hotline if you have questions on food services, if you need help with technology, if you have an issue and you need help for a counselor, for your student. And then anything also to do, having to do with special ed. So please feel free to call our hotline. Again, that number is 973-435-9637. And that's my report. Thank you, Mr. Alper.
Thank you.
Mr. Alper, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm gonna push that phone number out to the messages to all the attendees.
Great, that's terrific. Thank you. Ms. Merklinger?
Hi, everyone. I just want to echo my peer board members with just how grateful we are for those who have joined virtually. It is a little awkward and odd to be holding a board of ed meeting virtually, but it's actually kind of fun as well. But I just want to thank everyone for joining and for all of our teachers and staff for their dedication, hard work. It doesn't go unnoticed and just even the amazing things that are being put out on social media. Teachers holding up their signs and praises, doing all different Instagram challenges. It's really great to see just everyone being, taking a part of the West Orange community and joining in and keeping everyone's spirits lifted. So it's really great to see. I did want to congratulate, one of our tech directors, Phil Santiago, was featured on the New Jersey School Boards Association Best Practices for Distributing Security and Maintaining Digital Devices for Remote Learners. It was held this past Thursday and he was one of the keynote speakers. So thank you, Phil, for representing West Orange during that presentation. And for those of you that haven't seen it on our Facebook page and the West Orange school site and on Instagram, we partnered with the township Mayor's Sunshine Club or Funds. And Coach Grant came up with an idea and our very own assistant coach, Mazarick, Andrew Mazarick, designed a sweatshirt and West Orange Stronger Together. And you can get those shirts. There's hoodies, t-shirts in black, gray, blue. It's really great. And so far, we've had over 650 units ordered and over $9,000 raised to help families in West Orange that are dealing with the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. So if you are interested, that is on our website. It's also on social media, so check that out. And thank you to Coach Darnell Grant and to Coach Andrew Mazarick for coming up with that idea and creating it. And other than that, just everyone stay positive. There's still hope for schools to reopen. There's still hope for a spring season for our athletes and just keep positive.
Thank you. Ms. Trick Scales? Unmute yourself.
I thought everyone could read lips. I was just testing. I was just saying I wanted to offer my heartfelt condolences to the Soriano family and to all the families who've lost a loved one and my best wishes to those who are enduring this disease and and I pray for a full recovery for everyone. Also, to all the healthcare workers, the township officials, the food service workers and the local restaurateurs, houses of worship, the volunteers and the truck drivers who have given of themselves to keep us all safe. And so I just offer my gratitude to all. And of course, as my colleagues have said, thank you to our teachers and our BOE staff who continue to work every day to teach and support the education of our students along with the guidance of our parents. And I I can only imagine, and I've said that before, you know, parents, this takes homework to a whole different level. And we certainly appreciate and and try to make sure that we're supporting you in every way we can. And I just wanted to do a census 2020 shout out. Nearly half of our township residents have yet to respond. And you should be getting a reminder letter and a paper questionnaire in the mail. If you haven't gotten it this week, it should be any day now. And please be reminded you that you can answer the questionnaire, you can respond by phone and online. And if you by chance misplaced your census ID number, you can go to 2020census.gov and you can find out what you need to do there. And please, we just want to ensure that you and your family members and whomever is residing with you at this point in time, that everyone is counted, because each person who was counted brings federal funds to our community and to our schools through the next 10 years. So that deadline has been extended. But still, we want to make sure that we are able to get everyone counted. We are not going to have census takers ringing your doorbell anytime soon. So we would appreciate it if you could get that that questionnaire in. It it means something to each and every one of us residing here in West Orange. So thank you. And thank you to Mr. Kramer. I I just wanted to thank him as well for his comment.
Well said. Yeah, you know, as I sort of said before, you know, I'm just so, you know, proud of the work being done by our teachers and our administrators, our parents and, you know, just and outside of school by, you know, just the people of West Orange, you know, as we try to help each other through this. It's obviously, it's, it's all uncharted waters and incredibly trying times. But, you know, I've never been more proud to be here and represent this township and its people. So with that, we're done for the night. Our next meeting will be held online at 7:30 PM. That's correct, 7:30 for the public session on May 4th.
No, April, Monday, April 27.
April 27th at 5:00 PM.
Right.
Do we have an open session during that one?
Yes.
All right. Well, there you go. Our next public, our next regular public meeting is May 4th. Our next meeting is April 27, 5:30 PM. See you at one of them.
And that's our policy meeting, right?
Ah, that's the public part, right.
Policy workshop, our policy workshop.
All right, thank you. With that, we're adjourned. Have a good night.